Welcome, everyone. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 et cetera of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you please call the roll?
Didich.
Here.
DePiero.
Here.
Dinsmore.
Here.
Fergieri.
Here.
Hernandez. Here. Jan. Mandel.
Here.
Mealy.
Here.
Napolitano.
Here.
Veely.
Here.
Von Aken.
Here.
We also have with us our board planner, Ms. Vivate, our board engineer, Mr. Cagiano, and our board attorney, Mr. Wendell.
All right. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This meeting is open to the general public. Let's get started with our resolutions, as we have four of them tonight. Everybody should have received the resolutions by email through the course of the week. Is there any, are there any other comments to be added at this time?
I'd just, I'd actually just like to ask on the, the one resolution, the, the individual by the lake, um, what's the name of that?
Imad Lawandi.
Lawandi, yes. I mean, if that read fairly nicely is that, that he's going to have to stick with the comments and the presentations that he made. Um, you know, there was some concern over his wanting to come in and use up, say, the whole thirty-five feet height as opposed to keeping it to twenty-seven, twenty-eight feet, that kind of thing. The way I read that, that resolution, it sounded pretty, pretty tightly woven that he has to stick to his representations.
I think our attorney did a good job. Do you have any comments?
I think I did a good job as well. No, but seriously, I appreciate Mr. Dinsmore. I think the, uh, it, the will of the planning board and the concern of the planning board was obvious that night, and I think Ms. Veely's concerns as well about what she would end up seeing, uh, eventually. Uh, so I think it's a good way for the planning board to work in conjunction with our attached officials to provide them with the necessary clarity that they need and also for, quite honestly, an applicant to get what they want and to live up to what they represent under oath before you.
Yes.
Uh, you would think oaths mean something. Uh, so there you go. Uh, but I appreciate Mr. Dinsmore and I hope, uh, that, uh, you love my other resolutions.
Well, I love them all much. I'm happy, I'm happy to move them as a group if that's acceptable.
I believe that we have, uh, different voting blocks, so we'll need to, uh, look at these separately.
Yes.
Um, but with that said, um, I'll accept, um, a motion on application twenty-one colon five oh three.
So moved Dinsmore.
All right, Dinsmore, do you have a second?
Second, Polatena.
All right. Nora, please call the roll.
DePiero.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
Fergieri.
No.
Mandel.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
That's it.
Okay, very good. Vote has been taken. Resolution on application number twenty-one colon five oh four. Do we have a motion?
So moved Dinsmore.
All right. Uh, motion to approve Dinsmore, do we have a second?
Second, Hernandez.
All right. Nora, please call the roll.
Didich.
Yes.
DePiero.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
Fergieri.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Mandel.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Veely.
Yes.
Von Aken.
Yes. All right. Motion is approved. Moving on to application twenty-one five oh six. Do we have a motion on application number twenty-one five oh six?
Happy to move that one, too.
All right. Dinsmore, um, to approve application twenty-one five oh six, do we have a second?
Second, Mandel.
Nora, please call the roll.
Didich.
Yes.
DePiero.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
Fergieri.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Mandel.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Veely.
Yes.
Von Aken.
Yes. All right. Motion is approved. Application nineteen colon five one three. Do we have a motion to approve this application or to approve this resolution?
So moved again.
Okay. Motion for Dinsmore, do we have a second?
Second, Didich.
All right, Mr. Didich. Um, Nora, please call the roll.
Didich.
Yes.
DePiero.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
Fergieri.
Yes.
Mandel.
Yes.
That's it.
All right. Resolution is approved. Moving on to the rest of our agenda, we have application presenting tonight, twenty-one colon five one zero, Globe Logistics Inc. on nine thirty-nine Edwards Road, block seven sixty-seven, lot thirty-one. This is preliminary and final major site plan for construction of a flex space. Uh, are you the applicant, sir?
Yes, my attorney.
All right. Please, uh, present yourself.
Good evening. Gregory Asadori from the Wallflower Conference of Merit on behalf of the applicant, Globe Logistics Inc. This is an application seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct a flex building which will have a couple of different uses, which we'll get into. It will be a mezzanine, a lounge for drivers, warehouse space, and also office space. It's also going to be, it's also going to house a tractor-trailer transportation business. Um, the uses are permitted. We are seeking the single variance, which is for driveway width. Um, please let me know, I have my mask on, so if it's hard to hear me, please let me know and I'll try to speak out.
You're clear to us.
Thank you. Um, the owner of the property is currently the estate of Eugene Sizzling. We have obtained owner's consent, which is filed with the application. The contract purchaser is going to be an entity called Edwards Realty LLC. Once the purchaser purchases the property, it's then going to rent it to the applicant, Globe Logistics Inc. The, uh, there is common ownership between the purchaser and the applicant, so it's not as though they are two separate, uh, entities, two separate, uh, owners. We, we, we need a couple other approvals from other agencies. We have applied to the Morris County Planning Board and we've received approval on August twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. We also applied for the Highlands and we received an exemption. The pre-approval was actually filed back in December twenty twenty, uh, by the present owner and we're waiting approval on that. And we are waiting a pending approval with the Soil and Conservation District.
Okay. Oh, go ahead.
As I indicated earlier, we need a single variance. It is for driveway width. There are two driveways, a north league driveway, which is a full movement, meaning one way in, one way out. That complies, that's twenty-four feet. And there's also going to be a southern league driveway, which is one way in only. And that one, we are requesting a variance for a driveway width of thirty point five feet. The required pursuant to code is twenty-four feet and we are requesting variance of thirty point five feet.
Okay.
We're also requested, uh, four waivers in our application. Um, the board has said if you wanted to go through the waivers, but, uh, they're really straightforward.
That's our process generally. I, at this point, I'd also like to announce that Ms. Jane is here, um, part of our planning board. No problem. All right. Susan, would you like to review the waivers?
Your information, your information's down there. You're going to end up having to sit in one of the views.
Yeah, as the applicant's counsel indicated, there are several waivers requested. Um, one was on the floor plans for the existing building, which we, we concurred with since that building is going away. Um, you also mentioned the Highlands exemption, they are exempt, um, pursuant to number four, which deals with impervious coverage as long as you're not increasing by over a hundred and twenty-five percent, and they're actually decreasing, so they are exempt from Highlands. Um, we recommended waiver on temporary construction and facilities and storage areas and an environmental assessment study, given that it's a fully developed site, previously quite disturbed and probably will be better off from an environmental standpoint. Um, and then likewise, we also recommended waivers on the conditions of final approval since this is a combined application.
Okay. Now, I have a motion from the board, uh, to grant the waivers, as read.
Uh, motion, Fergieri.
Fergieri with the motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second, Hernandez.
Hernandez with the second. Um, Nora, please call the roll.
Didich.
Yes.
DePiero.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
Fergieri.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
I'm not sure how much Jan had heard.
She, she was here.
Yeah. I had her a while.
Mandel.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Veely.
Yes.
Von Aken.
Yes. Okay. Um, sir, back to you.
Thank you. Um, as I indicated briefly, this is going to be a flex building, um, look at the house, a tractor-trailer transportation business with warehouse, office, lounge, and there's also going to be a maintenance area for my client's vehicles only. It's not going to be maintenance to any outside vehicles. There's presently a single-family house with a eight hundred sixty-four square foot of office. That's all going to be demolished and the new building will be built if we're fortunate enough to receive your vote tonight. Uh, the property is located in the L.A.W. two, Limited Industrial Wholesale District and the R three Residential District. The new building will be approximately thirty-one thousand one hundred eighty square feet and it'll be comprised of the uses I described. The office will be approximately five thousand eight hundred ten square feet. The warehouse will be fifteen thousand seven hundred ninety-five square feet. The maintenance area will be eighty-three hundred square feet. The outdoor, there'll be some outdoor sport, storage space, and the mezzanine slash driver's lounge will be two thousand seventy-five square feet. We are proposing thirty-five parking spaces for tractor-trailers, whereas twenty-one are required, which means there's no variance for that. We are also proposing forty-four, uh, parking spaces for vehicles, passenger vehicles, where twenty-nine are required. So once again, there's no variance. There is a, there will be a reduction in the purchase of eighteen thousand one hundred eighty square feet. The current impervious is one thirty-two four forty. We are going to reduce it to one fourteen seven twenty, which results in, um, less impervious, eight point eighteen thousand seven hundred twenty square feet. Uh, as I described, it's going to be, uh, two driveways. Um, the northern will be a full movement and the southern will be one way in only, which requires the variance. So with that said, um, it was pleased me to bring my first witness, Eli Kamowski.
Do you, still not used to standing, uh, we're all doing Zoom. Uh, do you, do you swear a firm tell the truth tonight before this planning board?
Yes.
Okay. Can you please state and spell your name for the record, sir?
Miles Kamowski, first name Miles, M.I.L.E., last name Kamowski, C.K.M.O.V.S.K.I.
Give me one more time on that. C.A.M. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Can we do this?
Sure. Counsel, your, uh, your witness.
Mr. Kamowski, can you please state your title with respect to the applicant?
I'm the general manager of Globe Logistics.
And you're employed at Globe?
Yes.
And can you describe for the board, Globe's business operations?
Well, as you stated, transportation, warehousing. Uh, we're in, uh, since it's been established two thousand eight, we operate all over United States. We operate fifty-three dry-banned trailers, trucks. Mostly we transport packaging goods, dried foods, clean freight, no hazardous, no chemicals, no liquids. And we have customers in multiple states. We have big customers in Georgia, Illinois, Ohio, Jersey, New York, that we hold their freight, all over.
And how many employees do you have?
Office employees, twenty-one, full-time and one part-time.
And what are your hours of office?
Monday to Friday, eight to five, and Saturday and Sunday, the part-time after-hours, eight to three P.M., eight A.M. to three P.M.
And how many trucks does Globe own?
We have eighty power units, uh, but like I said, they're scattered all over the United States, but we have drivers from Florida, Georgia, Illinois, Ohio, so we keep the, they keep the trucks with them, basically.
So they're not all on-site at any particular point?
No. I would say ten, fifteen percent.
With weekends?
Yeah. With weekends, the whole.
And are all the trucks the same size?
Yeah, we have fifty-three footers and we have box, box trucks, smaller, twenty-four footers.
And what time do the trucks normally enter the site?
They, they go out, they enter between two P.M., three P.M., when they finish, the regional guys, when they finish their work, they go out between five A.M. and seven A.M. in the morning.
Now, as part of the, its business, Globe does not manufacture any products on-site, do it?
No.
Um, and it does not store any hazardous materials? And with respect to the parking, how is the parking situation with respect to the trucks?
Well, the parking situation, basically, we do not park, uh, if drivers come in for orientation or for safety meetings and stuff like that, or over the weekend when they come home, uh, we have like drivers that live in New Jersey or also to the place, maybe I would say fifteen, twenty percent of the drivers. So they would come back on Fridays, spend the weekend here, get out on Mondays, and they would stay out a couple weeks, months at a time.
Now, are most of the trucks parked during the week or are they parked on the weekend?
No, during the week, it's basically empty. Some of them coming back only on the weekends to do their restart, like thirty-four hours at home.
Are most of the trucks on the road during the week?
Yes. Yes, definitely.
And does Globe park other truck companies' trucks on its site?
No.
So it's only Globe's?
Only Globe's.
Now, with respect to the parking of vehicles, cars, who, who would park their cars on-site?
The office employees and the drivers. They would leave their cars at, uh, our space, pick up their truck, and like I said, they could, they could be out weeks or months at a time before they come back in.
So is it fair to say that a driver may come, park his car on the site, and then leave with a truck?
Yes.
And is that why you are asking for more parking spots than is water?
Correct.
Now, uh, with respect to the building, there's going to be a maintenance area, correct?
Correct.
What is the maintenance area for?
Maintenance area is for our own trucks and trailers, preventive maintenance, basically checking lights, hoses, tires, brakes, so they're FMCSA, DOT, truck, road-ready vehicles.
There's not going to be any maintenance to, um, outside the?
No. No.
Now, you're also proposing a fifty-eight hundred, uh, intended square feet office, so who is that for?
Correct. For the office employees, the, the conference room, meetings.
And you're also proposing a mezzanine and driver's lounge?
Correct. Because usually if the driver comes in and he doesn't live in the area, he would like to clean up himself, take a shower, you know, rest his, do his thirty-four hours reset, so he get, at least he gets something to do this evening.
And there'll be a bathroom for him?
Yes, correct.
Well, I may have asked you this, and I apologize if I did, but there'll be no chemicals or hazardous material stored on-site?
No.
I believe that's all the questions I have for this witness.
Okay. Um, Susan, any questions for the witness?
Um, yeah, you talked a little bit about the parking, and I don't know if this is a question for you or for an engineer, but, um, I, I, I'm understanding the need for the excess spaces for the trucks, I'm sorry, for the cars, because they're, they've got, they're taking the truck out and leaving their car. But what about the excess for the trucks? Because I think you indicated, um, you know, thirty-four, thirty-five spaces for the tractor-trailers, but, um, only twenty-nine are required.
I can give you an example, like the driver holder that lives in Illinois, he's going on a vacation for two months, eight weeks, and he said, can I give the truck three weeks in Illinois? I would rather bring that truck here while he's on vacation, because in that meantime, I would find another driver to fill that truck and to get out on the road again. So I need a couple spaces that I can have some extra spare trucks with, uh, I mean, the turnaround of the drivers, you know, it's not, uh...
Okay. Understood.
All right. Mr. Cagiano, any questions for the witness?
I just had a question about the overnight passenger car, or parking. Um, you have parking along the frontage and then parking on the side.
Okay.
Um, how many spaces do you think you'll have, you'll need for the overnight parking passengers?
I mean, it's tough to say. Currently, I would say where we're based now, I can see maybe some pink cars, as we are right now.
Any issue with having them signed at, uh, no overnight parking along the frontage parking spaces?
No, we can use the sign. As a matter of fact, we can use truck parking for the cars, so when they come in, they can just switch spots.
We'll leave them in the car spots. That's, that's, and then just, I, this is not really engineering, but would there be any, uh, truckers sleeping in that lounge?
Not overnight? No. No sleeping.
Or, or in the trucks themselves?
They, they, I mean, they, the trucks have their bunks and stuff like that, so...
So it's possible that they'll be sleeping on-site overnight?
On the parking lot. I mean, not often, but it's possible.
Any members of the board have questions for the witness?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mandel.
Uh, will you be having fuel on-site for these vehicles or will they be fueled off-site?
No fuel, sir.
No fuel. Oh.
Any other questions, questions for the witness? Okay. Uh, do you have any other witnesses?
I do. Um, I don't know if this board wants to open to the public for this witness or just at the end open to the public.
Uh, we've typically done it at the end, but, uh, that was during COVID times. I think it's, uh, time we start bringing ourselves back to the old way. So thank you for the reminder. Um, at this point in time, we'd like to open up questions, uh, to the general public for the, uh, for the witness of the general manager. Any members of the public liking to ask a question? Seeing none, I will close the public portion. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My next witness will be our architect, Charles Schaefer.
Mr. Schaefer, do you swear a firm tell the truth for the, tell the truth before this planning board tonight?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
It's Charles Schaefer, that's S.C.H.A.F.E.R.
Okay. Counsel, your witness, you want to?
Thank you.
Give a brief qualification for Mr. Schaefer?
Mr. Schaefer, how many years have you been practicing in the field?
Uh, forty-one years.
And you are a duly licensed architect?
Yes, in, in New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and New York.
And have you testified before other planning or planning boards in the past?
Yes, I have.
And have you been qualified as an expert in the field of architecture in the past?
Yes.
At this point, I would move Mr. Schaefer to be qualified as an expert in the field of architecture.
Does the board have any questions about Mr. Schaefer's qualifications as an architect? All right, seeing none, witness is acceptable, please continue.
Thank you. Mr. Schaefer, you're familiar with this project, right?
Yes.
And this property is nine forty-nine Edwards Road?
Yeah, been out of several times.
Okay. And can you please, uh, in, in preparation for tonight, you've prepared exhibit, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And do you have a copy of the exhibit we did today?
Yes, I have on the easel, I have a, a building facade, which would be what would be facing the street. Um, the building's about two hundred feet long and a hundred thirty feet deep. The facade is about fifty-four hundred square feet.
Mr. Schaefer, I'm going to go in just a minute for one second, I apologize, but I don't believe that this is part of the packet that the board received, so why don't we just mark it, uh, as Exhibit A one and put today's date on it? You got space to do that either on the side or back?
In the sky.
In the sky, in the sky, you got a lot of blue sky.
In the sky.
Goodbye, Maine. Okay, we'll call that A one. Counsel, I'm sorry, please proceed.
Mr. Schaefer, can you please describe A one for the board?
Yes, this is a, uh, a rendering that we did of the building. Um, as I said before, it's facing the street. The front portion of the building is twenty-seven feet tall, rear portion is twenty-four feet tall, so all of the water is running away from the street to the back of the building. Uh, we have, uh, if you look at it, here's the arch canopy over the entry. That'll be a, a, a clear glass canopy that will protect people entering and exiting the building. The, the colors of the, of the ducts are actually gray and orange, so most of the block is, or all the block is actually grayish color. The, the metal panel, it's the insulated metal panel, that's actually a light gray. Um, and then orange is another color, so we've got the stripe on the building. And actually, it goes all the way around the building all towards the side. Uh, the rear of the building, would you like me to put the other drawings up?
Uh, yeah, we will. I just want you to go through it and then I want to ask you about the sign before we get to the other.
Here is a, a, uh, internally-lit sign on the front of the building. It's, uh, it's about a hundred thirty square feet. It is, uh, maybe a tad more, maybe about a hundred forty square feet. It is basically twenty feet long by seventy feet, like six inches tall. Um, and it's based on a proportion of the front of the building. Your, your ordinance says that for every one and a half foot of frontage, you have one square foot of sign, not to exceed a hundred fifty square feet. We do not exceed a hundred fifty square feet, realistically.
And could you please describe the building materials?
Yes. Um, all of the block, what you see is the gray block, it's on the lower panel, a portion of the building is at seven foot high, seven foot four high all the way around the building, except on the corner. Um, that is to protect the building over the years that it can start looking old with the, with the outside. The, the actual gray portion of the building is, um, is, that is, is just a metal panel, but it's an insulated metal panel. So it's a little bit better looking than just your, your normal pre-engineered building panel. This is a pre-engineered structure, um, but what we have done is we, we tried to bring it up scale just a little bit because it's not a big, big photo.
And do you have any other individuals?
Yes. Yeah, I, I would just like to, to quickly go through the plan.
Can we mark the, uh...
Mr. Schaefer, if you're going to stand and talk, I think you can do that, you just got to take the mic with you.
Oh, okay. But I could do that.
You can just, uh, that could just be taken off.
Can everyone see that okay or?
Just turn that around.
Perhaps we could mark the, uh, that A two?
Uh, we could do that. These are, these are ones that were already submitted to the board, right? There's no change from the, from these that were submitted to the board?
No.
All right, we'll mark it as A2 just for the purposes of the meeting tonight. All the architectural drawings that have already been submitted to the board.
It's a, it's a fairly basic structure. As I said, that the, that the front of the building is at 27 feet tall. The rear is at 24, so all the drainage is towards the back of the building. On the front of the building, there is a, a entrance here that has that curved canopy that I showed you before. And then there's a small office area here in the corner. And back of that is a maintenance area that has a mezzanine on the second floor. And the other portion or the major portion of the building is a warehouse. That warehouse has, how many doors are in the back of that? It was one, two, three, four, five, six, seven doors, which are loading dock type doors. And then there are three doors here for the maintenance section. We are going to have LED lighting in the building, all the latest efficiency things that we're doing. The roof is going to be a double roof system where you have one layer of insulation and there's another roof layer on top of that. So it's a double roof system. It gives up at an R49 value for the roof system. Then there is a stair right here. That is the stair that actually goes upstairs to the lounge. Small lounge, but it's a place where you can put your feet up and take a shower. So there's a small kitchenette there. If you want to make a cup of coffee. There's some locker rooms for women, some for the men. There are showers, so you can take showers. And the other portion upstairs, this is all what you see here. That's all lower level. That's only one floor. This area here is two floors, so this area is the second floor office area as well. Here you can actually see the proportion of the sign for the building and it's under what is required. So we have a detail of it here as well. This is the, the, the left side of the building. This is the glass front. This is the curved canopy we had over the door. And then there's several exit doors. There would be gray block and there would be stripes on that as well, which are also the orange matching this orange stripe here. This would be the right side of the building. Very clean. It'll have the same materials at the front and the rear, so all sides of the building will look like married together. It's not two separate buildings or a lot of times you'll see something done on the front and then you're around the sides and it doesn't look very good. But this will all tie in. These are the, the, the dock doors that we talked about. There is one, there is one drive-in door as well on that level. They add into that space in case they need to drive a four-foot in or something like that that they do it. And the other three doors are the, are the actual maintenance doors that go into the shop. Other than that, it's all, all pretty straightforward.
Mr. Schaefer, I believe your architectural drawings are comprised of four sheets, correct?
Yes.
And the first floor, as we discussed, was for the maintenance shop and for storage of the mezzanine?
That is correct.
And the second floor is where the driver's lounge will be?
There's a mezzanine and a driver's lounge.
And locker rooms with showers for the drivers?
That is correct.
And the office space?
Yes.
And I believe you testified that the slab is approximately 150 square feet?
It's, it's all less than that.
It'll be internally lit?
Yes.
And it's going to comply with code?
Yes. Yeah, that's actually stated on the drawings.
And is the building going to have sprinklers, internal sprinklers?
Yes. Due to the actual maintenance portion of the building, anything over 5,000 square feet in maintenance must be sprinkled. So the building will be sprinkled. There'll be a four inch line that comes in that, that's the way.
I have one part of the process closed, Mr. Schaefer.
Okay.
I'm sorry, one last question. I apologize.
It's okay.
Mr. Schaefer, I want to ask you, all the testimony that we provided today was with any reasonable degree of architectural certification?
Yes.
No, please?
Okay. Ms. Bate, any questions for the architect or witness?
None for me for the architect.
Okay. And Mr. Cagiano?
No, listen.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Mealy?
Mr. Schaefer, with respect to the sloping roof, heading down towards the end of the building, will there be downspouts there to take the water down?
Yeah, every, every line that you see here, here, here.
Oh, okay.
There, there.
Great.
So there's a lot of them there.
Yes.
And if we need snow guards on a roof, who will do that as well?
Thank you.
That depends on a lot of factors yet.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? All right, seeing none?
Thank you.
Our questions are concluded. Thank you. Do you have another witness?
Yeah, I do.
Oh. Thank you again. At this point, we'll open the public portion of the questions. Do any members of the public have questions for the architect? All right, seeing none, I'll close that portion of the meeting. Moving on.
My next witness will be our engineer, Paul Ferrero.
Do you swear a firm tell the truth for this planning board tonight?
Yes, I do.
Okay, can you please state and spell your name for the record, sir?
Sure, my name is Paul Ferrero, F-E-R-R-I-E-R.
Okay. Counsel qualifications?
Sure. My education background includes a bachelor's science degree from the United States Military Academy and a graduate degrees at University of Pittsburgh. I've licensed as a professional engineer since 1988. I've qualified before many boards throughout the state to probably 100 to 150 board meetings a year. Currently, I'm a visual engineer of about 18 communities from Stockton Borough, down on Delaware River up towards. And a couple of these.
I'd like to qualify.
Would you grab the microphone?
You can just use that. Please turn it towards you if it does not.
I'd like to open Mr. Ferrero as an expert in the field of engineering.
Do any members of the board have questions about Mr. Ferrero's engineering credentials? All right, seeing none, Mr. Ferrero is an acceptable witness. Please continue.
Thank you. Mr. Ferrero, can you please provide the board with your familiarity with this project?
Sure. I've been involved with this project for a number of years. I did the original site plan design for the prior approval.
Turn the mic a little bit more for.
You know, if you would just grab the other microphone because I'm not taking you up well.
Okay, as I said, I've been familiar with this project for quite a number of years. We, I did the original site plan design for the prior approval on the project. More recently, I've been involved in this project. I've made a number of site visits to the property, directly supervised the preparation of the site plan design.
And you're very familiar with this property, correct?
I am. It's, as the board probably knows, and it's been stated in a couple of the letters, it's 939 Edwards Road, Lot 31 and Block 767. It's just under five, or I'm sorry, just under 68 acres in size.
And it's a dual zone, correct?
Correct.
And in preparation for tonight's meeting, did you prepare site plans?
I did prepare site plans. If I just could for one second, let me mark the exhibit I have over there. Color them and just give some pre-forehandation.
Sure can. We'll have them marked as A3. And how do you want to describe the fall? As a site plan?
We're calling it colored exhibit.
Colored exhibit. A3, thank you, Paul.
Those are the big holes until cleared for board?
Preparation date is September 9th, 2021. The purpose of that exhibit is really just to give the board a general feel and context for the site. You can see that the rear portion of the site is wooded. I can tell you that there are wetlands back there. There's also a DEP regulated flood point in that area. As we move further towards Edwards Road, you can see our stormwater, courses are our stormwater management system, a truck parking at the rear of the building, coming to the building itself, and then the main parking in front, park, automobile parking on the front and the sides of the building. You could also see that there are some stormwater management basins towards the front of the property as well. The prior approval going back to 2007 was for a, a commercial flex space with quite a number of buildings and substantially more parking area than we're currently showing. That application was received preliminary approval. It's, it was partially constructed. It has not yet been completed. However, based on a number of factors, the current applicant has come under contract to buy the property and develop it as you see here. If you want, I will walk over there and give you some of the information on the various site plans.
That'd be great. Just go ahead and take the mic with you.
I'll take this one. I feel more like.
That works for you, Nor?
That's what it's there for.
I didn't even see it. Do you want to mark the site plan set as A4?
A4. Thank you, Paul.
These are the site plans that are revised through July 22nd, 2021. They consist of a number of sheets. I'm not going to go through all of them. But what I will do is I'll, I'll flip to sheet number three of 12. This is the overall site plan sheet. And you can see some of the information I was talking about earlier. We have the wetland area in here with our transition area. There's also some isolated wetlands up at the front of the property, which developed as those stormwater basins were, were constructed previously. The building sits towards the front quarter of the property with the main truck parking in the rear and the automobile parking on the, on the north side and the east side of the building, west side of the building. Also part of the set, we have a grading plan which shows how the detention basins are graded in. There's some retaining walls to make all the grades work. I'm not going to go through a lot of detail of this because certainly answer any questions, but I don't know if I want to go through every one of the details. There's a, a lighting plan that we show as well to provide adequate lighting for the site. Remember, this is not the kind of site where the public is going to be coming in on a regular basis. People who come here know the site and they can get around it. So we chose not to overlight the site. In my opinion, it provides sufficient lighting, but we're not lighting it up extensively. We also have a landscaping plan as part of the set. Primarily, the landscaping is focused to the front of the building along the street. So you can see what's going on there. We do have some buffer plantings along the northern portion of the site to provide some screening for the detention basin in that area. We have a soil erosion sediment control plan, which most boards find very boring. So unless you want to talk about salted, I'll skip right over that and read through the construction details. And frankly, what I'm going to get to is probably the most important aspect of this application based on the engineer's letter we got today. There was a question slash concern as it relates to the access to the site. Remember that Edwards Road is down here towards the bottom of the drawing. I'm sorry, New Road. That's where all the vehicles are going to be entering and exiting the site from, from the 280 direction. So our objective here was to have a one-way truck circulation in a counterclockwise manner around the building, entering towards the New Road side, exiting on the, on the far, on the far side of the building. There is an issue in the alignment of the driveway. You can notice the turning template we have here. And this is for a, a large building with a large, I'm sorry, a large truck with the full over-the-road bunk tractor. Okay, so this is the largest vehicle that would be getting in here. It's, it's, there will be many trucks coming in here that are not that safe. You can see that the vehicle crosses over the, the opposing lane and gets into the site. In my opinion, that probably works because of the relatively few number of those vehicles. However, we've, we've looked at this and I've reviewed it with a traffic engineer who's going to be speaking after me, that we can make a slight modification to the, the northern island here. We had most, we might lose one parking space. We can widen the throat of that driveway out a little bit and make it so the vehicles can get in without crossing the center line. We'll provide that information to your engineer. I will make the comment, however, that as has been stated earlier, we need a variance for the width of this driveway currently as it's laid out for 30.5 feet. I would ask that we be granted the variance to make that 35 feet to make sure we get in there. The driveway widths are important because you don't want to have a massive sea of asphalt for vehicles getting in and out of the site. What we can do to mitigate that somewhat, we need to widen the throat, but I will tighten the radius on this side so the actual opening from curb to curb is not quite as wide. Because I'm not going to have vehicles coming southbound on Edwards Road and turning left in. At least I'm not going to have trucks that are going to do that. So I can tighten that radius on that side so my curb-to-curb opening is not quite as large. We will, however, need that 35 feet to be able to get the vehicles in there. As I said, we, I reviewed this with a traffic engineer earlier today. We're convinced we have a solution that works and we'll present that to the engineer to show, to demonstrate how that can be done. There's a, there's another question that was asked relative to the status of the wetlands applications. Some of those were, were applied for back in December. They are in the DEP work-from-home queue at this point. We've followed up on them a number of times and have not received any satisfactory answers as to where they are, but we're going to continue to follow up on them.
Thank you. Just to walk through some of the plans real quickly. So the existing structures on the site will be demolished in their entirety, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
And there'll be a warehouse space consisting of 15,795 square feet?
Yes.
And there'll also be office space consisting of 5,810 square feet?
Correct.
And there'll be a truck maintenance shop, approximately 8,300 square feet?
That's correct.
And also a mezzanine and driver's lounge comprised of 2,075 square feet?
That's correct. That's consistent with what the architect and the operator said earlier. I know that the engineer had some comments on getting some numbers completely in sync between our plans, the architectural plans and the traffic report we certainly do.
And in total, the building adds up to 31,980 square feet?
Yes.
And there'll also be some outdoor storage of vehicles as was testified to earlier?
Correct.
Now, with respect to the park, number of parking spaces, I know there was some questions. It's going to be a proposed 44 total vehicle, passenger vehicle spaces, whereas 29 are required.
That's correct.
And the truck parking will be 35 spaces, whereas 21 are required?
Correct.
Because I know there was a question as to whether it was 34, 35 trucks. It's 35 spaces.
Yes.
You described the landscaping. Can you briefly discuss stormwater management?
Sure. I'll go back to sheet six, which is the landscape plan. But what that does show is we have stormwater management basins along the northern property line, another one on the southern property line near Edwards Road, and we have a large main basin in the rear. Your engineer had some comments on the design of those. I understand exactly what the questions are and we can make the necessary revisions to make that work. I've done a preliminary look at it and I don't present, think it presents any significant problems.
And you had submitted a stormwater management report and a manual to the board as part of the application?
Yes.
Can we mark that as A5? Or maybe we could do a stormwater management report as A5 and the manual as A6?
We could just call them together, stormwater.
There's a stormwater design report and the O and M manual.
That sounds good.
Just, could you describe the flow of the water through your stormwater system?
Generally, everything flows from Edward, Edwards Road to the rear into the wetland area that's in the back there and that those drainage patterns will be followed.
Does that include your, your side basins too or?
That's correct. They, they, they end up flowing to the rear as well.
And you just also described the two driveways. Just to make sure there's no confusion, the northerly driveway will be 24 feet in width?
That's correct. It's the northerly driveway and that's the two-way access point. And then now I'm looking at sheet three. This is a 24-foot wide driveway here and it allows vehicles to come out and turn and head south on Edwards Road towards New Road.
Now, just so it's clear for the board, you say it's a two-way driveway. It's a full moving driveway. But however, only passenger vehicles are going to enter, correct?
That's correct. All the truck traffic will be coming in the southern driveway.
So no trucks will enter through the northerly driveway?
Correct.
However, passenger vehicles and trucks will, will exit through the northern driveway, correct?
That's correct. And passenger vehicles could come in the southern driveway to access the parking stalls in front of the building.
And with, right, with respect to the southern driveway, which is where we need the variance, we are asking for ingress only, no egress there?
Correct.
And both trucks and passenger vehicles can enter the southern driveway?
Yes.
And based upon your review of the engineer's review letter which we received today, is it your professional opinion that if we get a, an additional four and a half feet in width, increasing the variance from 30.5 feet to 35 feet, meaning the total driveway is 35 feet, it would be safer for trucks to enter?
Yes.
And that would satisfy, in your opinion, the concerns raised by the board engineer?
Yes.
I believe the existing utility poles are to be relocated, correct?
There, there are some pole relocations along the front of the property line because they conflict with the proposed draft.
And the existing retaining walls are to remain?
Yes.
Can you just briefly describe striping or do the striping for the board?
Sure. That's shown on the, on the, on the exhibit, on the plant sheet here, sheet three. You can see the stalls parked and painted out in front of the building as well as the vehicle, automobile parking on the north side automobile parking on the north side. And you've got the large diagonal spaces in the rear for the large trucks.
And I believe we have received a planning review letter which discussed lighting. The light poles, I believe, are presently proposed at 20 feet in height, correct?
Correct.
Is it your opinion that those light poles need to remain at that height?
Yes, there's always a trade-off with light poles. If you have them lower, you need more. If you have them higher, you need fewer. This is the case where it's really, the back of the site is a industrial type use and the 20-foot-high light poles with the large trucks that are in there are really appropriate for that type of use on the property.
And the lights will be shut off at 10 p.m.?
Yes.
Except for security lights?
Correct.
And with respect to this application, an application was made to the Morris County Planning Board as well, correct?
Yes.
And approval was received on August 17, 2021?
Yes.
I'd like to mark a copy of the Morris County Planning Board approval as A6.
Okay.
I believe the planning board has assessed this going to be a copy approval. I made copies if the board members want them.
Nora, did the...
I actually should have it. Rose sent me that.
I'm sorry, Nora, I didn't hear you.
I have. They sent it to me, I have it.
Okay, okay. So it's available to the planning board members?
I have copies if the board wants them.
I'll take one for mine.
Yes, please.
The planning board wants a copy.
Because I need more paper than not.
And council, just for the record, this is correspondence from the Morris County Planning Board with their approval?
Correct. dated August 17, 2021.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, I wish. Mr. Ferriero, can you briefly discuss any rooftop equipment or generators that may be utilized?
I wouldn't think there'd be a generator on the rooftop. I think frankly, Mr. Schaefer would be better to talk about any rooftop mounted HVAC equipment.
And is all the testimony you provided here today made within a reasonable degree of engineering certification?
Yes.
I have no further questions. Okay. We'll start with Mr. Cagiano.
Yeah, and the engineer hit my major concern on the site and it is the circulation of the, you know, the large WB67s. That's the large over-the-road tractor trail that he described. So I'm just still a little concerned with that. Maybe you can shed some light on the... Now, right now, the driver has to make like a compound turn. He's got to turn to the right to turn into the site and then kind of turn to the left to avoid going around the building. What is, what's precluding you from kind of reconfiguring that detention basin, isolated wetlands, to maybe move that wall, detention basin wall, a little bit to the south and kind of reconfigure that toward the south a little bit and in toward the site, kind of widening the right-of-way pavement a little bit? And you don't have to answer, we don't need to discuss it at length, but I'm still looking to see what issues are, preclude you from kind of moving it to the south that may be...
Sure. And my biggest concern frankly associated with that is dealing with the DEP. They've had this permit application for nine months already and if I move that and start encouraging on that well, then I get to restart.
And that was, actually, I should have led with that question. My other question was the status of the DEP permits and what permits? Are they GPs for the wetlands? And are they doing a site plan review? And are they doing a stormwater management review as well? And they've already, you've already submitted the application?
We submitted that, yes. We have not gotten responses back, but continuing to follow up.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have an objection to widening it to the north. My thought too, maybe to soften the look. I know in some instances, they change the pavement texture to like some pavers on the outer edges of that and the light to kind of soften that wide pavement look. Would you be opposed to some kind of paver treatment near the edge there?
Because it's heavy truck traffic, I'd be a little concerned with the durability. We could use some striping to kind of visually narrow it a little bit, but it's going to be, I think, a little bit of a concern of mine if people say there's some... I'm just worried about the durability of that truck.
Yeah. They could always put the pavers on concrete.
Could do that.
Yeah. We've had success with that.
If you want to do that, it's...
We can, I'm not opposed to the moving the driveway to the north and widening. I think it's important that the trucks, you know, it is a trucking facility and that we do our best to have them have a smooth flow into the site, staying within their old travel lane. So maybe if it's striping, just to narrow that throat a little bit, that would be a good idea, I think.
And we can work something out. I'll give you some options.
Yeah.
And then we'll come up with a plan and be done with it.
That was, that's all I had. Let's see. And you mentioned two utility poles. I saw the pole on the northerly end. Where's the other pole that gets relocated?
I have to play. Where's Waldo with that?
No, that's not a problem. Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cagiano. Ms. Vavate?
You mentioned some retaining walls, I think some of which exist, maybe some others are, will be constructed. Can you confirm the maximum height of any of those walls? Are there any over six feet is my question?
I don't believe so, but I will confirm that.
I believe the existing are 40.
Right, our plan labels the maximum wall height is 40.
Okay, good. And will there be any signage out front, monument-type signs?
Just the building monument sign. The only other signs that would realistically be there are traffic control signs like directing the trucks into the southern entrance.
Okay. That's all I had.
Okay. Any board members with questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead. Yeah, Mr.?
Actually, well, for Mr. Cagiano first, I guess you've calculated that the basins, as they have them set up, are sufficient for, you know, our...
Yeah, actually, it's a very elaborate basin design and we gave some comments that I believe the DEP are going to have the same comments that we asked because we review ours based on the town ordinance, reflects the state model, state ordinances, and they're both in block and step. So if you haven't received comments from...
I know what the comments are going to be because you brought them up.
They're going to be the same comments that we have with the basin depth and the infiltration depths of those basins. So that's my prediction. Yes, it meets the current standards and it's...
Okay. And then for the witness, the downspouts which are carrying the water from the sloped roof, are they just emptying, are they directed towards your basins or do they...
They'll be collected with a header pipe and piped to the basins.
They will be, okay. And you want to... That's all for me right now, thank you.
Mr. Mealy?
Have you received a report from the fire chief regarding access for fire equipment?
I have not.
Has that been asked for or is that something that should be looked into, Mr. Chairman?
The application was sent to the fire district, so there was no response.
It's up to them to respond.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Mealy.
You're welcome.
Do you remember if the 2007 application was before the board of adjustment or the planning board? Because I was on the board of adjustment at the time and I remember this property.
You having some recall?
Well, this whole area has had, you know...
I thought it was a planning board application.
I think it was a planning board application.
Was it? Yeah, I think it was a planning board application.
I may have been thinking of the Liza application next door. But the whole area has been a wetlands complex problem, as you can tell. And this actually looks like it's going to solve some of the problems that were dealt with before. So as an engineer, is it your opinion that this actually helps the situation or at least makes it no worse?
In my opinion, it makes it better for two reasons. Number one, we're reducing the impervious coverage from what was previously approved. And secondly, the stormwater management is about four generations newer.
So you think this will do a better job of allowing the rainwater and other waters to drain into the aquifer and that whole area?
Yes. Okay.
It was the planning board.
It was?
It was. It was a preliminary approval only. I'm not sure why they never went to the finals, but it was a preliminary approval by the planning board.
Okay. They may have, well, because I know I heard something about it on the board of adjustment and I don't know whether they decided it was really more appropriate at the planning board level.
It looked like they only needed a C variance. And that's like, I don't know, I wasn't involved, but I'm assuming that's why they weren't in the planning board.
You know, 14 years ago and I've seen a few applications.
Any other questions? Mr. Mandel?
Yeah, a couple of questions, but one, I think maybe more for the traffic engineer. I'd like to get a better idea of the truck routes. There's 80, 280, 46, all in that area. Where are the trucks coming from? Are they coming east on 46 and are they coming strictly off of 280? I mean...
I think... Mr. Mandel, I think that that's, not to put the engineer on the spot, I think that you're going to hear that testimony. They do have a traffic expert, Mr. Paragoy, who's going to be coming up in a moment, who will, having heard that question, I'm sure he will be, he's taking copious notes to respond accordingly.
Okay. Then the only other question I have is, I noticed you provided handicap parking. I did not notice that you have provided EV charging. Has that been considered?
My client has not considered that at this point. Those can be relatively easily added if there are, if there's an employee demand for it. I don't know if there is or not. I drive an EV, but, and I have one at my office.
Well, I'd like to suggest that they consider putting that in initially.
I'll take that recommendation.
Definitely. I have a lot of luggage I bring, so.
I think it's okay, condition of approval.
Yes, Mr. Napolitano. You can also go to the Wawa next door. They have a charging station as well. Is this building going to have solar panels?
That I don't know.
Okay. I could have sworn I heard you say New Road, but you're not exiting or entering off New Road. Only Edwards, is that right?
That's correct, but Edwards Road goes down to New Road.
Yeah, there's, no, no, I'm saying just off, because there's a road that's right behind the Wawa and the spa that's there.
Yeah, no, we're not accessing that road at all. No, this is all, our access is off of the New Road.
Thank you. Will, there be a need for a sound wall between your property and the spa that's there?
In my opinion, no.
Okay. And I guess that's traffic. Will you be planting native trees and shrubs?
I have to go and look at the plant list again, but that's our intent to generally plant native species.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Napolitano. Any other questions?
Yes, please.
Yes, Ms. Veely?
The retaining walls, just out of curiosity, I know some of the, on the plans, some are existing and some are proposed. Is there anything else on the site that was existing from the past that's already there that for permit processing would be different than, I know there's a lot of proposed retaining walls around the edges. I'm just trying to figure out for permitting process, what we've given permits to.
Well, if the wall doesn't exceed four feet, it doesn't need a construction permit.
Well, it actually does because if it's four foot on the height...
The retained area is greater than four feet.
Yeah, my construction department includes the under the ground. So if it's four foot high, you know some of it will be underground. So those will all actually all need a construction permit. And zoning, that's why I'm just taking notes and I was just curious if you, if you know, there's a couple, I noticed on the plan, there's a couple that are existing and then there's quite a few that are proposed around the edges.
Right, and obviously, any permits that are required would be obtained.
Okay. I was just going to try to write, but their maximum of four feet is the height.
Four feet exposed height.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I just have one or two questions myself. Could you describe the shape of the curbs? Are they soft curbs or are they your standard?
Vertical concrete curbs.
Okay. And the light poles, you said they were 20 feet in height, correct? All right, I just wanted to confirm that for the record. All right. That concludes my questions. I'd like to open it up for public portion. So if any members of the public have questions for the engineering witness, please come forward now. All right, seeing none come forward, we'll close the public portion. Mr. Wenzel, did you have any that you wanted to add?
I just wanted to confirm a couple of things just so that we're clear. In terms of it as a potential condition of approval, the completion of the NJDEP permitting process will be a condition of approval. I'm sure, council, you'd agree with me on that one, right?
Absolutely.
And that the applicant would agree to continue to work with our board engineer and any other township personnel as may be required with regard to the entrance way of that apron going in on that southerly driveway. I think you'd agree that you would continue to work with them on that design, to agree that something could be worked out to soften it. I'm sure that's an engineering term, but we'll use it.
More of a planning term.
Planning, yeah, well, everything's a planning term. And can you just clarify for me, because this may be not a condition of approval, the northerly driveway, no trucks are being allowed in through the northerly driveway, correct? Now, is there going to be any signage or marking to identify to a truck to not enter through those means? Or alternatively, a sign at the southerly direction to tell them, please enter here?
Well, I think it would be appropriate to have a sign on the southerly driveway that says all trucks with an arrow for me.
All right. So you would agree with me that as a condition of approval, a sign identifying, a very basic sign identifying trucks only?
Typical block-on-way traffic control sign.
On the southerly driveway? You think that that's the best for an engineering purpose?
Yes, because the vehicles are going to be coming from that direction.
And I see that there's, on your plan, you have directional arrows. Directional arrows, if you look on the, what I'll call the northerly part by the building, are there actually going to be directional markings on the pavement so that cars and trucks will know how to proceed throughout? Before you were indicating signs, but I didn't know if you meant that as signs and markings or just signs?
They're on, they're shown on the site plan for the purposes of demonstrating certain reason. There would be signs, there would be some arrows right at the access points because that's where you really need them. Once you get into the site, you kind of know where you're going. But I think we want to have the typical no-exit sign to do not enter as you go out the wrong way or we can come up with a traffic control sign in place for that.
I'm sure you don't want any vehicles to get hung up on your property either. Yeah, I think we all share on that one. So, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. And also as a condition of approval, I think you indicated that the lights are going to go off at 10 o'clock?
Yes, except for security lights.
Light poles, I think you indicated, would be going off at 10 o'clock, just so we're clear?
Yeah, except for the security lights. There's going to be a very turned-down number of lights that would be on from dusk until dawn, just to provide some security lighting.
And you would agree that to be a condition of approval?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, I have one more question that came up. Is there any fencing or anything like that to secure the yard or is it just...
No.
Okay. Thanks. All right. I think we've concluded all of our questions. You may continue.
Thank you. My next witness will be our traffic expert, Craig Paragoy.
Paragoy. Can you, do you swear or tell the truth for this planning board tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Paragoy, even though I know I spelled your name, you're going to just state and spell your name for the record.
Sure. Craig Paragoy, P-E-R-E-G-O-Y.
Okay, counsel, Mr. Paragoy's brief qualifications.
Sure. Mr. Paragoy, can you please provide the board with the benefit of your educational background?
Sure. I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Virginia Tech. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, and I testified pretty much every night as a traffic engineer, including more recently, Brady Lunch style, with all of the guys. Nice to be here in person.
And you've been qualified as an expert in the field of traffic engineering?
Yes.
I'd move Mr. Paragoy to be an expert in the field.
Any questions for Mr. Paragoy's, on Mr. Paragoy's credentials? Seeing none, we'll accept this witness. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you please describe for the board your familiarity with the project?
Yeah, we prepared a traffic impact statement for the project. I got feedback from the applicant, you heard some of that tonight, and his operational testimony about how this is going to work and the sort of volume of traffic. And I, I think it's pretty clear that this isn't highly intensive use where you have cars coming in and out all day. It's basically a confined operation. And as traffic engineers, we look at that, the ITE, the Institute of Transportation Engineers data. So I look at that data and I have the discussion with the applicant on how they expect things to work out, and that really matches up pretty well, exactly what the ITE would have predicted if we didn't know who was going to be here, is what, what they anticipate. And you, you heard the prior testimony that primarily the trucks are going to be exiting early in the morning, between, you know, between five and six in the morning, and returning between two and three. I think that's key, because, you know, traffic engineers, we're always looking at the peak hours, that's seven to nine weekday mornings and four to six weekday evenings, that's when the roadways are at their busiest. So those truck peak times, and the ITE data suggests similar, are outside of the peak hours. So essentially, when you have your busiest traffic volumes in the area, it's essentially the office staff and people who work on the site. And just to get to the specific numbers with the ITE projects for those peak hours, it's about 12 trips per hour, a trip being a vehicle either entering or exiting. And typically where we would engage in an expanded traffic study and take a look at levels of service and things like that, is if you had 100 or more trips, that's called a significant increase in traffic. New Jersey, DOT, and the ITE both set that threshold. So we're well, well below that threshold in those peak hours. So certainly not something that's going to be a big traffic generator or generate much traffic impact. To put it in perspective, the whole day, the ITE data for an entire day is 104 trips. So what would be significant in an hour, we're barely getting there throughout a 24-hour day. So it's certainly not going to, certainly a good use for this location, it's not going to impact traffic adversely. One of the reasons I think that this location is great is because of the proximity of 280. I heard the question before about the truck routing, and based on the nature of their clientele and business, we anticipate nearly all of the trucks are going to go right to that 280 interchange and get to the interstate highway system. Will you have an occasional truck that maybe needs to go towards Route 46? It's possible, but generally, almost exclusively, we're going to be oriented towards the 280 interchange, and that's really the reason the site selection is great. So those trucks are only in town on local streets for a few seconds and then they're out of here. So I think in terms of traffic impact, this is certainly a suitable location. I heard the discussion earlier about the site driveway, we will tweak that and make sure that that works. Basically, the truck that we're using is the largest truck on the road, it's actually a little bit larger than the biggest legal truck in New Jersey on the template, and it's also driven by the worst truck driver in the world. That's what those templates pretty much give you. So if it works with that, it's going to be very easy in, in reality. And that goes for the entire site, too, the back of the house, the way the truck circulation's laid out. Plan's well developed, keeps that backing of trucks and all that activity away from the passenger cars, which are being in front and on the side. You know, my truck activity is in the back, so internally, I think it works very well, too, from a traffic perspective.
And you prepared a report, right?
We did.
Can we mark that as A7?
A7, traffic report?
And what's the date of release?
July 7, 2021.
And can you just quickly walk the board through your report?
Yeah, well, I mean, that's, that's essentially what I just did, but...
And maybe to, by now we're down to... Right, maybe, can you just discuss the trip generation at AM?
Yeah, and that's what I mentioned before, that's about 12 trips is what the ITE suggests, it matches up with their numbers. The IT would say one truck in that peak hour time period, you heard the testimony, it's unlikely to be any trucks in the peak hours based on their, their operations.
And you heard the testimony about here tonight, correct?
Yes.
And with respect to the full movement driveways, the northern area, you don't see any issues with that at all?
No, no. The access is, is well designed, it's good, because you want to get those trucks going and have one-way circulation pattern in and out, so I think, you know, it's good that we have enough fronters to set up this way.
And you also heard testimony where the applicant is now seeking a variant for the southern driveway. It's 24 permitted, you have 3CS with 30.5 feet, and now we are asking for 35, correct?
Correct.
And in your opinion, does that 35 foot width relieve any possible issues that may have arisen?
It does. I think we'll get it in under 35.
As long as you have a good charger, right?
Templates are bad, probably. Those things show, they can turn them much easier, handle it much easier than the templates usually show.
And the onsite circulation works as supposed?
It does, yes.
And you have no issues with the spaces of the parking spots, whether it be for your tractor trailer or whatever you call it?
No, that, that circulation won't fail.
And there'll be no off-site traffic increase as a result of this project?
No. You won't notice one day or the next unless you have to be a 45-plant asset, see a couple trucks come up.
And all of your testimony presented here tonight, is you tend to reasonably agree with the traffic with the dance of the thing?
Yes.
I have no further questions from the witness.
All right. Ms. Vavate, any questions for the traffic witness?
None for me.
All right. Mr. Cagiano?
No, no, we're just, no questions.
All right. Any questions from the board?
I have a...
Go ahead, Mr. DePierre, councilman.
Since we had no fire department response, the circulation for a fire, how big is your largest truck compared to say, fire engine?
This is designed for the largest vehicles on the road. WB67 tractor trailer is much bigger than any fire truck.
Okay, so then, so there should be no problem with circulation for the fire engines either if they need it?
Exactly right.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Cagiano.
One question, it might have been answered, and I, I didn't catch it, but what is there to prevent a truck driver who's heading east on Route 46 to come the back way down Edwards Road? And then be tempted to make a left turn where we don't want them to be making a left turn into the lot, instead of going all the way, you know, not all the way, but the longer route, which would be to stay on 46, make a, you know, make, make a right, and then make a right, and then they make the right into the driveway, which is what we're discussing, that entrance. There doesn't seem to be, and maybe I'm missing it, what besides the drivers being told not to go that way, is there to keep them, because it's a shortcut?
I don't know that there's any truck restriction on Edwards Road, on the railroad, so it's, it's feasible, I guess, that somebody could do that, and they would physically be able to make a left into the site.
They could, they could do it, but it's a single-lane road and, you know...
That, that is exactly the reason why I think they wouldn't want to go that way, because it's kind of a curving, single-lane road, it's not going to be as easy. Again, I, I think most, if not all, the trucks are going to be oriented from 280. Like I said, we have one truck that sneaks down that way every once in a while. I don't think it's the end of the world, but I don't see it.
Okay. So, but, so what, what I'm hearing is there, there is, at this point, if that happens, it's rare, but there's nothing in place to keep it from happening?
No. And I, it's very difficult to have trucks restricted.
All right?
That's it for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cagiano. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Napolitano.
Thank you, thank you for your report. Just want to make note that there, there is really no way to get to Route 80 East from this area, except to go up New Road, over 46 and beyond, I think Bloomfield Ave. So I would imagine they're going to use that road. And they say it's going to be very rare, and that's fine, but you can get on 280 east and west, but you can't access 80 East unless you go through New Road, Bloomfield Ave, and so on. So I just want to throw that out there, that's, I'm going to make note of that, that's it. Thank you.
All right, I just have one or two other questions. Let's see. What is the distance between New Road and the, and the south entrance approximately?
I'll give you a guess and then...
The reason for my questions is I'm just a little concerned about queuing, going into the site or potentially...
Oh, oh, it's, I mean, it's, it's probably 1,000 feet.
Okay.
Well, the queues from that signal won't get back to this.
Okay.
I know about 600 feet.
Okay. So i- in your opinion, no, no impact to the flow of traffic either coming into the site or leaving the site, or for the traffic, the normal traffic that goes on there?
Yes, about 30 vehicle lengths away from that signal.
Fair enough. Okay. Anybody else? All right?
Craig, would you agree with me that adding that extra five feet to that entrance way would help to prevent the potential for any accidents that could occur on Edwards Road? Because these trucks are coming in at 5:00 in the morning, it's dark, and to prevent those trucks from going over into the other lane would be a help?
Yeah, absolutely.
At, at that time of day, because it's going to be dark for most of the year, right?
Yeah, 100%. The trucks need to turn in from their lane, not from the other lane. No doubt.
Okay. All right, at this moment, I'd like to turn it over to the public portion to ask questions of the traffic witness. Do any members of the general public want to ask questions of the traffic witness? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public portion, and we're done with our questions for the traffic witness.
I have one more witness, it's the planner.
Okay, thank you. I believe we will also have some follow-up questions for the operations manager. It's up to you. We, we, yeah. No, that's fine. Yeah, no, 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 that's fine.
You're up here, might as well stay.
I can walk back, I mean, my steps.
Do you swear or tell the truth for this planning board tonight?
I do.
Okay, can you please state and spell your name for the record, please?
Sure, it's Christine with a C-H-R-I-F-T-I-N-E, Luzaro, N-A-Z-V-A-R-O, Cafone, C-O-F, as in Frank, O-N-E. Business address is 125 Half Mile Road, Street 200, Red Bank, New Jersey, 07701.
Good to see you, Ms. Cafone. Counsel, brief qualifications, somebody like Ms. Cafone?
Ms. Cafone, can you briefly tell the board which professional license is yours?
Briefly, I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I have my AICP license, which is a national planning license. I've testified here in Parsippany before both your planning and zoning boards, and well in access of 400 other planning and zoning boards throughout the state during my 25-year career as a planning consultant. I teach planning and zoning courses, and I'm a capable housing special master, and my license is required and valid.
Any questions of the qualifications for Ms. Cafone from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Cafone, you're an acceptable witness.
Thank you, thank you. So, good evening, this is what I would consider relatively easy lifting for me tonight. This is a permitted use in the LIW zone, so the use is completely as of right, and we need only one bulk variance to exceed the minimum driveway width for only one of our driveways. There was a representation earlier tonight that we would be increasing that request to 35 feet, and I think that you heard collectively from the questioning and the testimony of both our site civil and our engineer, that that's what we would say in planning results in a better zoning alternative. And why is that? Because it will result in safer and better efficient traffic ingress and egress through the site. So statutorily, the board can grant the bulk variance under the C1 or C2 statutory criteria, or both. I think in this case, you could consider both the C1 and C2, given the proximity of the sites with an intersection, as well as the C2 criteria, having advanced one or more purposes of the land use law to substantiate the granting of a C2, which is the flexible C variance. So as long as you find that we need one or more purposes of the land use law, you can also grant the variance under the C2. I would submit to the board that in my opinion, there are several. Criteria A talks about promoting the general welfare. Of course, having our sites develop in accordance with the zone plan, but in a safe and efficient way, promotes the general welfare. I also think the board can rely on Criteria H, which talks about promoting the free flow of traffic, that's really the low-hanging fruit on this application. I think that you can also look at Criteria M, which talks about an efficient use of the land. And then, of course, Criteria G, which talks about sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. Given the fact that we're as of right zoned here, it would be difficult to come to the conclusion that the site is an appropriate for this. We are, however, reducing the overall impervious coverage on site. So that's the positive criteria under the C1 and C2. The board also has to consider the negative criteria, and in that, that really has two cons to it. The land use law does not ask you to hold us or any other applicant that there be no detriment, just that the benefit to the grant of a variance would outweigh any detriment. And I think here you've heard uncontroversial testimony in the record this evening, that the wider driveway will in fact result in safer traffic turning movements and avoid some potential issues with people accessing the site early in the morning. I think some questions were asked earlier, would we be willing to do some pavement markings or some changes? And I think you've heard of certainly willingness on behalf of our team, and the board can certainly consider that in the negative criteria. Anything the board wants to condition as a reasonable condition of approval, that you felt to mitigate as far as to those changing pavement markings would, I think, be appropriate for the negative criteria. So statutorily, like I said, I think this is a pretty straightforward and easy one, as far as I'm concerned, in some of the cases I participated in, this is a relatively straightforward application with one bulk variance to actually exceed the minimum driveway requirements. This is really a substantially conforming application that I think certainly meets the statutory burden of proof for the grants of the C, C variance under the C1 and C2 statutory criteria, with no substantial detriment to either the public good or the zone plan here in Parsippany, if the board will move faithfully on the applications. And with that, I have nothing further on direct, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Maybe just one or two questions if I ask you?
Sure, of course.
This project will help revitalize this project, correct?
It will, yes.
And this project obviously would not burden the school system, because it's not like it's a condominium that's being built where there's going to be children coming.
It's a permitted use in the LIW zone, too, so it's, it's definitely a permitted use, and there's no issue with the use of, of the site yet.
And this is not a project where people would not come to the site unless they have to, meaning, you know, if you have a Dairy Queen or Dunkin' Donuts, you know, you could drive by, maybe you're a quick check, you stop by. Here, you, you only go in there because you have to go in.
Correct.
And this would be efficient use of land?
That's Criteria M, I spoke about that in the positive criteria.
And it represents a sound zone.
It most certainly does, it's a permitted use in the zone, so I would say legislative in your governing body thinks so.
And I have no further questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that said, Mr. Cagiano, do you have any questions for the planning witness?
No, no questions.
All right. Ms. Vavate?
No, I wish all planners could be so concise.
I was thinking the same.
I, I'll also just note... I like to hear myself talk at the end of a terrible Jersey flag, so less than more. I mean, I'll also just note that the, it is compliant, you know, in terms of the use, but this is also a dual zone, which, you know, I could go on all day about dual zones, and to me, the, the elimination of the residential use is a positive as well.
I would agree.
Okay. Any questions from the board for the planning witness? All right, seeing none, I'll open it up to public portion. Any members of the public have any questions for the planning witness? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion and return it back to you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no further witnesses. I had this great closing prepared, but I think it's a pretty much straightforward application. I think the board understands the application. It's flex building with transportation business and some associated uses. We do not need a use variance, we don't need any bags at all, except one for the driveway width, which is going to be thirty-five-foot aisle. We believe it will help revitalize the property and it provides sound zoning. So if the board was being inclined with the speculative request, that the application be approved.
Counsel, I think.
Go ahead.
I think you're going to say what I'm going to say.
Oh. Okay. Any comments from the board about this application before we consider any motions?
Sorry, do we clarify where, when you guys demolished what's there? What direction, where are you going to be taking it? Like, is it going to be going two eighty west, two eighty east, across New Road? Did we determine that? I don't know if I heard that in testimony. That specified?
Which direction, what's the model to be taken?
Yeah, which way are you going to be going, right on two eighty? Is that the idea? Are we driving through town with all the, you know, what's?
I.
That wasn't determined, right?
Perhaps the engineer can answer that it's, how it's going to be moving around off-site.
I think that's a little hard to answer with any kind of specificity, because there isn't even a contractor selected yet. Most logically, it would go someplace west down on eighty, which means it goes on two eighty west now.
Right, we try to make sure that it avoids residential areas as much as possible. So that's always our goal.
Those guys take no money, they go this way.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Frigieri.
Just a clarification for, maybe just for me, but without, we can vote on this without the fire marshal from that area, you know, issuing a report or a finding?
I'll defer to our attorney.
So the concept here is that when a plan comes in, it is provided through our planning and zoning office to various township personnel for their input. Should they wish to comment? There is no requirement that anybody comment on it. The only requirement is that you review the application as presented. The purpose of you receiving those recommendations, reports, and comments is to assist you with making determinations and also for those township professionals and personnel to identify what their level of concern is. As the old saying goes, if you don't speak up, that's it. That's not the old saying, I couldn't think of it, I just vamped on that point. But you understood what I was saying, which is if they're not saying anything, you just accept the fact that they had the opportunity. I have no doubt that our planning and zoning department absolutely provided this to everybody who should be allowed to comment, and you got back what you have. So that's the answer on that.
So our vote would hold?
A hundred percent.
Okay, all right.
Hundred percent.
I believe the phrase you're looking for is silence is acceptance.
There you go. I, he Googled it. Mr. Chairman, I think that there was some additional questions that Ms. Favate had for the operations manager.
Correct, see back there.
All right, so you're still under oath, so we don't have to go through that again.
So I think you testified earlier that the hours of operation are eight to five during the week and eight to three on weekends. In your experience, do you see the drivers come at other times? If they have to sort of switch out their car for the truck or vice versa? Is it possible that they would come during the night, or?
It's possible.
Okay.
It's possible, some, like, it's coming from a long trip. It's possible to come in at seven, eight P.M., nine P.M. Hard to truck, their car.
And they don't have to go into the building, they just basically, they have the keys, they do it all? So in terms of the security, I think there was some testimony offered that there'd be some lighting left on during the night for security purposes.
We're going to have cameras as well.
Have cameras.
Yeah, we have twenty-four-hour surveillance at our current facility, so. And we don't have any, I mean, we haven't had any incidents so far.
And you have other experience where drivers may on occasion sleep, you know, at the site, and you've never had any issues with that?
No, I mean, that was, usually they want to go to a truck stop.
Right.
Where they have all their amenities, so they can rest over there and talk to other people. They don't want to stay alone in the truck. At a secluded park.
That's all I have, thank you.
Just one more question for me. Do any of the trailers that might be staying on your property contain material, or are they generally empty?
They're generally empty, those are spare trailers that we're going to keep at our site. If a trailer comes in, it's going to be for a short period of time, so the driver can switch it, take it to delivery, but no loaded trailers stay for a long time.
Okay.
Just one follow-up, because I misheard something, I believe. What time do your trucks usually leave the site?
Between five and seven A.M.
Between five and seven A.M., so you'd be turning on the lights. You turn them off at ten, I'm assuming in the winter you'll have them on at.
Yes, yes, correct.
Say four-thirty or something like that in the morning. I just wanted to clear that up.
Correct.
I have one question.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. DiPiero.
When do you anticipate construction completed and being in operation?
Yesterday. I mean, we've been at it for a long time, sellers and us, so.
You figure six months, nine months?
We're eager to start as soon as.
No, when will be in operation?
Well, the property has to close first. So we still have a couple months there. We still need the deapproval and soil and conservation district approval. And so once we get final approvals, non-applicable approval, then we'd be able to close, go forward with the closing, and at that point, construction will begin. So it's not going to happen within the next month or two.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for the operations manager?
Mr. Chairman, yeah.
Yes, Mr. DeE.
Quick question, during the peak hours, at five to seven in the morning, how many trucks we're expecting to leave or come in?
Out, I would say five to six trucks.
Okay.
Those hours.
Okay, and for the maintenance area, right? I mean, again, I'm just going from the recent applications we have seen where the maintenance is causing a lot of noise around in the neighborhood. So what kind of maintenance we're expecting, and do we expect a lot of noise or anything?
It's not like overhauling and stuff like that, our trucks are brand new, they are under factory warranty, so any major repairs, they go into the dealership. Our shop is preventative maintenance, for the part of transportation, so everything operational, lights, hoses, brakes, P.M.
Okay, no major repairs, anything like that?
No, no.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I believe that concludes our additional questions for the operations manager. Thank you very much for your time. All right, and I'll open it again for any comments from the members of the board. All right, seeing no additional comments, I'll go ahead and turn it over for the public portion to ask any, or to present any comments that they would like to at this time. And seeing no members of the public stepping forward, I'll go ahead and close the public portion. At this time, I'd like to open it up for a motion. Mr. Mealy.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve application twenty-one, colon, five, one oh, Globe Logistics Incorporated, nine thirty-nine Edwards Road, block seven sixty-seven, lot thirty-one, preliminary and final major site plan and conditions enumerated by our board attorney.
Okay, that saves me the trouble of having to amend it. So would you like to list those conditions, Mr. Wenzel?
Before I do that, I think Mr. Mealy would also agree with me that part of his motion would be a motion to approve a bulk variance for the site under either, under both a C-one and C-two variance for thirty-five width, thirty-five-foot width southerly driveway.
So stated, yes.
There you go. Now, the conditions of approval, should the board wish to move forward, I think Mr. Mealy would agree with me, would be for the applicant to continue to, their application and do whatever work they need to do with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection with regard to the wetlands, detention basin, stormwater management, site plan, and letter of termination as to the wetlands, to continue to work with our board engineer and any other town personnel with regard to the entry point at the southerly area, and to provide such signage on the southerly entrance to identify that that is truck traffic entry only. It's going to be much shorter than what I just said. And also that the lights will be off, except for security lights, as of ten o'clock, and probably be back on, as Mr. Dinsmore indicated, probably around four-thirty in the morning. And also, I know that there was a reference made, but Mr. Mealy, would you agree with me that one of the conditions of approval should be that if there are cameras on site, and if there are going to be, if that's going to be recorded, that the operational people will make that available to law enforcement should the need arise?
So stated.
Okay, and Mr. Mealy, I'm just going to highlight one other piece I think you would agree with me on. Under chapter four thirty zoning, four thirty dash one sixty-two permitted uses in the LIW dash two zone, which this is, this is an allowed use. And I would just highlight to the applicant, and I'm sure the board would highlight, that this allows temporarily parked trucks and temporarily stored trailers. I know that there was a discussion about whether or not the drivers would be sleeping on site. It doesn't talk about sleeping, it doesn't identify that it's prohibited, but there is a indication of temporary. So I think the board would want to emphasize that word of temporary. You agree, Mr. Mealy?
So stated. May I say one other thing, Mr. Wenzel? I believe the attorney mentioned DEP approval has not been granted yet.
It was applied toward December of twenty-twenty and still not been approved.
Okay.
That, what I will do, Ms. Mealy, is make very clear that they are in that process, and they will continue to be in that process, and they'll continue to do whatever New Jersey they have to, do whatever the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection tells them to do to get those various things, I think, the board engineer, the applicant's engineer, so I'll look up what is stated.
And I would say in any other agencies, I think they're still waiting on soil and water.
I knew Ms. Favate would catch me, so, yes.
And they agreed to an E.V.
Yeah, I was going to say two more, there were two more conditions, Mr. Wenzel.
Well, yeah, they have the E.V., which I think the operations manager is going to put in tomorrow.
How many spaces are E.V.?
What, I think we indicated there's going to be at least one space that's going to be an E.V. charger.
It's usually best to put in two.
Three, we got three.
You got an extra one.
Three. And I'm sorry, I didn't hear about the parking in front, no parking in front overnight.
Okay. All right, so with Mr. Mealy's motion on the record, do we have a second?
Second, Mandell.
All right, second Mandell. Any members of the board like to comment on the motion in any way? All right, then we'll go ahead and take the vote. Ms. Ms. Bo. I'm so used to saying Nora. Ms. Jolie, would you like to call the roll?
I guess so.
I'm sure she would.
Didich?
Yes.
DiPiero?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
Frigieri?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Mandell?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Von Aken?
Yes.
Congratulations, your application has been approved. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
It's a lot prettier than what's there now.
Yes.
The owner's scared, he may not want to hear that.
Is there any other business from members of the board tonight? Anything not on the agenda?
Motion to adjourn.
One quick item that I would love. How do we want to go about the process of accumulating things we want to have for our annual report? Or if there's anything we want to send to the council that we want to change? The little things like.
I have a list.
You have the list?
I have a list, actually, that Susan and I have been kind of doing. And one really big one has hit us this last week.
Excuse me, one second. Gentlemen, we're not closed.
I've had several homeowners and commercial applications who are reading the setback chart. And in thirty years, I've never had this, where to zoning, there's building percentage, building plus deck, and impervious, we all know, and impervious is everything. Well, because the setback chart in that little column thirteen block, Susan probably know what I'm talking about, it says building and pavement, so they're submitting as building and pavement, but just building and pavement, so they're leaving off the deck. And they're leaving off, and so I've had two that came in with final as builds. Everything's built, they're ready to go, they have a buyer, there's a C.O. And I'm like, wait a minute, building and pavement, what about impervious, where's everything? And now they need to go back to the board, because now they're over on percentage. So I would love to change that in a bunch of places and kind of correct that and clean that up, because that's happened quite a bit. Thank you.
Yeah, Jen and I have a list, I think your list is smaller.
Really, after the lake house from last time, I really would like to revisit the height requirements or height allowances for smaller lots. And what we had discussed before, I think the simpler route would be to simply say that lots under five thousand feet or warehouses would be within twenty feet or fifteen feet of the road bed, that they're not allowed to be over twenty-eight feet or thirty-two feet, or something less than the thirty-five feet, so that we don't get that canyon effect when it's tight.
Okay, so I think probably the best way for us to do this is that if any members of the board would like to discuss items to add to our report, that maybe they present those to Susan, and then we can put together, put something together.
So Susan, Jennifer, will people list?
Would we include in that list our conversations about the E.V. ordinance?
Yes, I think that would be a great place to do it.
I have a list too of sort of master plan to-dos and implementations.
Okay, does that sound good to everyone? Please provide any ideas for our annual report to Susan.
Sounds like a lot of work for me. Nothing objective.
No, no, you'll have double work, because when we present those to the council, you don't get to touch it again. All right, well, thank you very much for your time, everyone. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some move, Dinsmore.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I just want to mention that our next meeting, we do have a minor for those involved.
All right.
Be there at seven P.M.
All right, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone.